President of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome you to the February 14th, 2024 Board Meeting and Happy Valentine's Day. That was not in the script. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolk12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Public participation will be held at approximately 5:15. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey.
I'll start.
By Ms. Pataglia. Questions, comments, corrections? Anyone? Ms... Ms. Pataglia, alright. I mean, no Ms. Sevigny here, that's good. Alright, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved joint meeting minutes for January 8th, 2024.
So moved.
By Mr. Whistler, seconded by Ms. Sevigny. Corrections, comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Now I need a motion for the unapproved FY25 budget work session meeting minutes for January 31st, 2024. By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by...
A second.
By Ms. Pataglia.
Ms. Herbert, I would just like to say I will be abstaining from the vote on this one just because I was not present for that particular board meeting.
Thank you. Any other comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, anyone abstain? Thank you. Now I need a motion for the unapproved board meeting minutes for January 10th, 2024.
So moved.
By Ms. Pataglia, seconded by...
A second.
By Ms. Sevigny. Comments, questions, corrections? Okay, I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. At this time, we will have the Carroll County Student Government Report, and it will be done by our student rep, Ms. Sahitha. Did I say that right?
Mm-hmm.
I'm getting better.
Good evening, Board members. Ms. Fofana apologizes for the absence from the past two months, things picking up after holidays and everything. We are currently planning our February General Assembly, which will be happening the next week at Century High School. This... at Winters Mill High School, apology. This GA is primarily for Ashrab Elections, which is actually the first two elections that'll occur. This is the primary election, and this election is reserved for high school SGA members that attend our February General Assembly. They will listen to speeches and go through Q and A, question and answers, with their candidates. We will also vote during this General Assembly. I am happy to announce that there are four candidates running in our primary... sorry, three candidates, two of which will proceed to our general election, which will be filmed right here in this boardroom. They will be given speeches and participate in another Q and A, and the general election will occur on March 22nd, where the video will be released, and all high school students will have the opportunity to watch this video and vote on the candidates. The registration form will be released, and please reach out to your advisors if you are interested in attending our General Assembly. CCSGA is currently collecting donations from all schools for Carroll County's own Shepherd-Saff Homeless Shelter. Each school will have the option to choose from four different drives: emergency meals/snacks, toiletry items, household items, and blankets and socks. March is often a time where homeless shelters experience a lack of donations, so contributions from all CCPS, middle and high schools, will make a big difference. Information has already been released, so please contact your advisor to begin collecting donations. On top of that, Flamatou Fofana has been arranging president meetings with SGA presidents across Carroll County in order to get outreach and transparency for all students. Finally, a couple of Maryland Association of Student Council updates. MASCE is hosting their legislative session on Saturday, February 11th, at Wheaton High School. Registration has closed, and this event has already occurred, and the MASCE General Assembly, where students all over the state, will have the opportunity to vote on the student member on the Board of Education for Maryland as a whole. MASCE also hosts an annual three-day, two-night convention to vote for their five officers for the following school year. Due to COVID, this annual convention has not been in person since 2020, but we're happy to announce that this is in person at Ocean City this year. It'll occur from March 22nd to March 24th. Registration will open on February 12th to February 7th. You must also be a school member in order to attend convention. If you're unsure whether or not your school is a member school, please visit MASCE's website to find more information regarding the member list. Please look out for more information as registration opens. Those are the updates, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have our public comment.
To have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers with a connection to CCPS will be allowed to address the Board for the allowed three minutes. Only those speakers that have registered online and have been notified by the Communications Department will be permitted to speak. Priority will be given to those citizens that are addressing the Board about an item on the current agenda. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through the email or US mail. Public participation is not intended to be a question-and-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and Board reserve the right to correct misinformation, presented as factual, after the conclusion of the public participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. The Board has scheduled time on the agenda for public participation at approximately 5:15. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. Additionally, the Board retains the discretion to allow additional speakers if it deems appropriate. The Board is allowing no more than an hour for public participation. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to the Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for the Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asking to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speakers or to the Board members. And our first speaker is Gary Foote.
Good evening, Board members. Superintendent McCabe, Lincoln's birthday was Monday. George Washington's birthday will be next week. I'd like to say a few words about someone who was never president. Onna Judge was born with three strikes against her. She was African-American, she was woman, and she was a slave. The self-evident truths American historians are fond of discussing certainly did not apply to her in 1773 when she was born. They didn't apply to her when she died in 1848. Her life was nasty, poor, brutish, and short, though she did have a slight advantage. She was a house slave at Mount Vernon and worked for George and Martha Washington. When the Washingtons moved to New York, when Washington became president in 1789, Onna Judge was taken along to help with the housework. This involved heavy lifting, constant demands, working in oppressive heat and excessive cold, with very little private time or personal space. This was the nightmare of slavery in 18th-century America: human bondage, murder, rape, dismemberment, and constant degradation. The reality is troubling, the kind of historical fact we have swept under the carpet for far too long. But believe it or not, Onna Judge did something that makes her story important history. She escaped from the household of the most powerful man in the Western Hemisphere. When the capital of the United States was moved to Philadelphia, Onna Judge moved with the First Family, and in Philadelphia, slaves automatically became free if they were there for six months or more. So the Washingtons had a plan to move their slaves back and forth between Philadelphia and Mount Vernon. When it was Onna Judge's turn to be sent to Virginia, she found out she was to be sold. So on May 21st, 1796, Onna Judge left Philadelphia on her own, and somehow, she was never caught. This was a story that was common knowledge among people in the know around 1800. Slave catchers were hired, advertisements were put in the newspaper, there were accounts of the efforts the Washingtons made to recover their property. This is all in public record, and yet, the story was somehow buried by 1850 and did not resurface until the year 2017. Certainly, it was nothing I was ever taught in school. This is the kind of story that gets suppressed when there is no freedom to read, when there is no freedom to teach, or publish, or maintain book collections that meet the needs of students and citizens, or there is someone who thinks they know what's best for everyone else. What happens if the facts offend someone, the policy gets changed? Will this book... will this story be something that is okay to teach? Will it be okay to teach in the future? Isn't this history our students need to know? But after your recent actions, who is going to be willing to teach it?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Malvo.
Thank you, Board members. Happy Valentine's Day, of course. So, my name's Greg Malvo. I'm a 25-year educator, currently teaching writing and literature. I'm the father of a Carroll County public school student, and I am running for one of the two seats available for Board of Education for Carroll County. I want to elaborate a bit on what I discussed somewhat in November, and that is cellphone use and over-dependence on technology, and in particular, lost interpersonal skills in grades K through 12 that extend on to college, impacting students in ways not experienced in the past. Here's a scenario. Rewind, 20 years ago, it's the first day of class. As I enter my classroom, I'm immediately hit with the buzz of discussion occurring amongst students. Once I enter the room, the conversations suddenly halt as they acknowledge me. I immediately greet them with a "Good morning" and am met with a vibrant "Good morning" in return. I pass out the syllabus, and the students dig into their backpacks for pens. As I read the course expectations, most are jotting in notes in the margins of the syllabus, and others are underlining with a highlighter. A student raises her hand and asks, "Could you tell me where the bookstore is and the hours to purchase it?" Next are class introductions, and then I give instructions to complete a diagnostic writing. The students dig into their backpacks once again to take out sheets of loose-leaf paper to write on. With dictionary in hand, someone asks, "Are we allowed to use pocket dictionaries to help us during the writing?" And I relate my preference not. I prefer her to do her best to spell the words on her own, and by the way, all the submissions are in cursive. Fast forward to today, first day of class, I walk into a deathly silent classroom. The students have heads bent downward toward their laps, intently texting or engaging in social media sites on cell phones. Deep into their e-activities, just a couple of them notice me as I enter the classroom. Only when I announce "Good morning" do some of the heads raise to look up at me and vaguely respond, their hands empty as each phone is put away, since it's the only thing that they brought with them. I share the syllabus and start fielding questions. A student calls out, "Can I get a link to download the course textbook onto my cellphone?" I say I prefer not. Introductions are done, and they are given the diagnostic writing. Rather than pen and paper, they are given college-issued laptops, complete with built-in spell check and grammar check as well, to assist in MS Word. I can predict that ChatGPT will come into the future writings as I attempt to decipher original writing from AI. What is my point in sharing these scenarios, past and present? Please consider the stark contrast. I encourage all of us to work to reduce the distraction and social crutch caused by cellphone and technology overuse in K through 12 schools to properly prepare our students for college, a trade, or the workforce right out of high school. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comment.
Thank you. We have two students that just came, and they are attending the board meeting tonight because they are both working on merit badges. So, David and Savannah, could you please stand? Oh, yes, it is. Yeah. David Atwell and Savannah Atwell. So, welcome. Thank you. All right, now we will move on to employee groups.
Nothing like embarrassing those poor kids or just trying to get a badge.
Yes, but I wanted them to be recognized.
They've earned the badge now, kids.
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, Board members. I am Sles Jordan, President of CCA. I would like to thank the Board of Ed for listening to concerns shared by Ms. Porter, employees, and me about student behavior and cell phones in the classroom. You have asked for work sessions on both topics, and that is a start. We cannot begin to solve a problem unless we acknowledge there is a problem and discuss it. I wanted to share a statistic about student... related to student behavior. From July 1, 2023 to January 31st, 2024, there were 162 workers' compensation claims filed by CCPS employees. Of those, 87 were student-related. Once again, I'm going to encourage any CCPS employee who is injured on the job to file workers' compensation paperwork to protect yourself. You'd never know when an injury can lead to a bigger problem. Not CCPS-related. On Saturday, March 23rd, Read Across Maryland will once again be held at the Career Tech Center from 9:00 to 1:00. CCA, CASE, and CCPS are co-hosting this free event focused on reading. There'll be a free pancake breakfast for children. We do ask for donations from adults that we use for the following year. Each child will be able to pick out a new book to take home. Penguin Random House has once again generously donated new books for this event. This event would not be possible without Penguin Random House, one of our community partners. We have guest readers lined up, including Vice President Pataglia and Mr. Whistler already, and anyone else who wants to join us, let me know. Liberty and South Carroll High School will be performing from their spring drama musical productions. Annie and Suzical will have plenty of activities for younger children related to reading. I also want to thank Sheriff's Office and the R.S.R.O. officers. They have arranged... they're gonna have a table there, they're gonna have a police vehicle there of some sort. Rumor is it might be the SWAT vehicle. The Westminster Fire Department will be there, thanks to Lieutenant Mulhenrick, a former student of mine. It scares me a little bit that someone made him a lieutenant, but alright. So, fire trucks there. It'll be a great event for the younger crowd, so please, everyone, mark your calendars for Saturday, March 23rd, for Read Across Maryland. On July 13th of last year, CCPS and CCA had the first meeting of the Career Ladder Work Group. I think both sides were more than a bit overwhelmed with the task in front of us. Through collaboration and the atmosphere of trust, the work group has been able to develop something that hopefully works for Carroll County. We are not at the point in negotiations where we can discuss specifics, but I feel confident we soon will be. I think CCPS could once again be a leader in the state. Quote Alexander Graham Bell, "Great discoveries and improvements invariably involve the cooperation of many minds." Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Dr. McCabe, and members of the Board of Education. I am Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing LPNs, clericals, and assistants working in Carroll County public schools. On January 26th, almost 480 assistants from different categories across our school system gathered at Winters Mill High School for a day of professional learning. This day offered a variety of sessions to provide meaningful and relevant professional learning for staff who work closely with our neediest students. As President of CASE, I want to publicly thank the many CCPS staff who utilized their knowledge and expertise to present the many sessions which are helping to elevate our professions. A special thank you to Jeff Alisakis and Jamie Weaver for all they did to facilitate this great day of learning. Last month, I came to speak to you before being released to drive after surgery because of the importance of addressing the issues of severe student behavior and the continuation of staff injuries because of these behaviors. I thank the members of the Board of Education for the discussion at the end of that meeting, because many of us knew after listening that we had been heard. While I am hopeful for steps being taken to better understand the complexities and severity of these issues, I am here this evening to reiterate the need for continued attention to these ongoing issues. In the past month, I've heard from parents and staff regarding effects of these behaviors on other students in our classrooms. One day, when emotions were running high in one classroom, a second-grade student in our county said, "I can't learn. It hurts my head. There's always screaming or something going on." I also received the following communication in the past month. "A friend of mine and I," who both happen to be Carroll County teachers and moms, and this is the communication I received, "have watched our daughters grow up together and play school countless times since they were old enough to talk. During a recent playdate, my friend and I sat and talked in the dining room as our girls played school in the playroom. We would occasionally peek into the playroom to watch our girls take turns being the classroom teacher. Suddenly, we heard something that prompted us to jump out of our seats and run into the playroom. We heard screaming, objects being thrown across the room, and two of the five girls throwing full-blown tantrums on the floor. Then I heard my oldest shout into a pretend walkie-talkie, 'Support, support,' in a panicked tone. My friend and I quickly realized that this was all part of their pretend play. This was their perception of school. We decided to observe rather than intervene as we watched our girls take turns being the unruly student that was out of control while the teachers called for support and cleared the classroom." This innocent pretend-play scenario was an alarming reality check for us as parents and as teachers. On the way home from the playdate, my daughters and I had an eye-opening discussion about school, special needs students, support calls, behavior, and the violence that they witnessed in their classrooms. It was as if the floodgates opened, and they were finally able to open up about the behavior of their peers, what they have witnessed, and the realities they face each day at school. "Have you ever felt scared in your classroom?" I asked, already dreading their response. "Yeah, a few times." How do we, as adults, justify that it's normal to feel unsafe sometimes at school? As you can see by these examples, we're at a crucial time for what school looks like now and how it will be remembered by our most vulnerable and precious resource. We know that this is a complex issue being felt here in Carroll County and in other counties across our state, but I ask you to continue to be vigilant in looking for solutions so our staff and students can come to school without fear or dread, and so we can get back to giving all students the positive educational experiences they need and deserve. Another topic spoken about recently has been the impact of cell phones on student learning in our schools. This, too, has provided significant disruption to instruction and learning in our school system. When trying to gain a better understanding of the depth of the concerns, I learned that in elementary, while cell phones are not as predominant a problem, students have gone to offices telling office staff that their parent is going to come get them early, or that they will be on the parent pickup list because of them receiving a notification on their smartwatches, or because they initiated the contact themselves on those devices because they wanted to leave school. But the issues at the secondary level are much more involved. One CCPS staff member said that students are missing instruction and not completing assignments because their cell phones are their primary focus. Another staff member said that they witnessed a student using one hand for their assignment and the other for utilization of their cellphone. When the student was asked to put the phone down to make their assignment the priority, they refused. Students are also positioning their phones on the inside of their open laptops to make it look like they're engaged in their assignments, but they're engaged in whatever is on their phone, many times with an earbud or a headphone over one ear. Phones are also being used to communicate with others, to get out of class, to meet up with friends or significant others. We know that this, too, is a complicated issue with no easy answers. Bringing these concerning issues to light and working collaboratively to gain a more comprehensive understanding are the necessary steps we need to take to begin to positively impact these issues for the sake of the students we serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have recognition statements, and we will start first with Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. Instructional Assistance Day. Our schools will celebrate Instructional Assistance Day on Wednesday, February 28th. This day is set aside to recognize the efforts of our IAs and paraprofessionals who help provide a quality education to our students. The members of the Board and I would like to thank these dedicated and hard-working employees for all they do for our students and teachers. They are an important part of the instructional team, and their work is invaluable in maintaining They're an important part of the instructional team, and their work is invaluable in maintaining high educational standards in our school system.
Thank you. Dr. Dorsey.
Happy Valentine's Day, and I will speak on the National School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Tomorrow, Thursday, February 15, is School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Our SROs play an important role in assuring the safety and security of our students and staff. They also contribute to the culture of our schools through their interactions with students and by serving as positive role models. We very much appreciate our SROs and value the tremendous partnership with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Ms. Pataglia.
February is Career and Technology Education Month. CTE prepares students with technical, academic, and employable skills for success in the workplace and to further education. These programs provide a range of opportunities for students to learn technical skills, earn college credit, and acquire industry certifications by completing a sequence of courses in their area of interest. Thanks to the outstanding efforts of our teachers and students, CTE programs continue to be recognized for excellence in Maryland and across the nation.
Ms. Sevigny. February is also Gifted and Talented Education Month. Carroll County Public Schools offers programs to meet the instructional needs of all students, including our most highly able learners and those students who demonstrate gifted learning traits. The Advanced Academics Program identifies student talent and extends students' learning experiences. Thank you to all of our advanced academic teachers for the work they do to build the program and enrich the instructional experiences of our students on a daily basis.
Thank you. And now, we will move into Board Member Activities and Correspondence, and we will start with our student rep and go back the other way.
Hello, everyone. On January 31, I had attended the Budgetary Work Session, which went very smoothly. On February 6, we held the CCSGA Executive Board Meeting, in which we finalized everything for the upcoming General Assembly, which actually occurred today. At today's CCSGA General Assembly, we voted on our primary election, which was for the top two candidates for Student Representative on the Board of Education. All the students had a lot of fun in the How to Run a Campaign Workshop, and later in March, we will hold the candidate speeches for the top two candidates to be Shrobb-Elect. The video will be released to all high schoolers to watch and vote. I cannot wait to see the amazing candidates and the next Shrobb-Elect. I'd also like to say Happy Black History Month. Remember to take the time to learn about some of the extraordinary people who strive for civil rights. Along with that, I'd also like to wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you. Ms. Sevigny.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert. So, clearly, I'm the only one who forgot to wear red this evening, so sorry about that. And I still do want to wish everyone a very happy Valentine's Day.
That's all right. You're here. That's the important part.
It's all good.
I'll give you my jacket.
So, just a couple of quick comments. So, I did want to say that I wasn't able to attend the budget hearing that was held on January 31. I was traveling on business and was not able to make that, but I did watch it, again, similar to the Commissioner's meeting last time. Wanted to make sure that I was up to speed on all the discussions that were had. So, even though I wasn't able to attend, I was able to see all the comments and appreciated the public participation at that meeting and also the discussion among staff and the other board members. The other item that I wanted to mention for this month was we had the third of our four Family Life Advisory Council meetings this month, and it was a very productive meeting. And once again, the minutes that are written for this meeting are always available to the Board. If anyone would like to see them, we'd be happy to pass those along. But very highly attended. We had, I believe it was 26 people in the room out of the 32 members, and we had several more online, so almost the entire committee was present for that discussion. And everyone is very well-prepared. There's a good process that's been set up for materials to be distributed in advance and a feedback form for those parents to kind of provide feedback in advance. So, it's very helpful. We were able to kind of move through the materials and take a vote on seven of the books that would be used at the elementary school level for the MSD version of the health curriculum. And so, four of the books were approved for recommendation, and three were declined. So, the way the committee decided to do that was they won't put forth the three books that were decided against, that had a majority against, but the ones that had a majority for, those will come to the Board for approval, along with and at the same time as the regular curriculum materials in June. So, all in all, a very, very productive meeting, well-attended, great discussion. And the parents were also very interested in sort of helping provide suggestions for the parent permission forms for next year, since it will be the first time that the permission forms will be available for the elementary school level. So, there was some confusion last year surrounding the permission form process, and so we're just basically trying to provide suggestions to reduce confusion as part of that process for parents. So, I think those recommendations will be forthcoming, or you can see them in the minutes, and then we'll see those curriculum materials in June. So, just wanted to give you all an update and let you know that the minutes are available, should you choose to see them. So, and thank you to Mr. Warnock for also helping facilitate a very productive meeting.
Ms. Pataglia, thank you.
On January 23, I attended the Commissioner's Reception, which was right across the street. Got the opportunity to meet some other government officials that are in the US side regarding our House of Representatives and the US Senate. So, that was, it was very nice to have an opportunity to meet them. Earlier that day, I had attended the Retired CCEA Meeting, where I was able to discuss and go over what the roles of a Board of Ed member are. On January 25, I attended the Career and Tech Ceremony, which is always a great event because I love seeing the accomplishments of the students that completed their specific Career and Technology Center courses. On January 31, I was here for the work session. February 5, I attended the MAB reception in Annapolis, where there was several board members from all across the state that attended there. And it was just nice to just, you just kind of meet and just have brief discussions. So, it's always a nice event to attend to, and I love going down to Annapolis. And on February 8, I attended the Security Advisory Council that was here in the boardroom. And then, there was a presentation regarding our stop arm. And so, just to kind of just tell you guys, so in December, there was over 1,000 citations issued for those who ran the red lights on the bus. And in January, there was over 800. And we go through it every year, and it's like, I don't know how many times we have to put signs up on the road, and when you take your driver's test, you go through it, you stop when the bus lights are red, unless there is a median in between the road. And it's just, it just still blows my mind. I just, I still can't, whatever. So, please, when the bus is red, stop, okay? Just stop. Don't try to decide you can go. Upcoming events, the County Budget Luncheon is tomorrow, and I'll be attending that. District Five Night will be in Annapolis on February 19, which is on Monday. We have the Superintendent Town Hall on February 26. And this Saturday is Kindness Day. And I will be there with the B.A.R.A. Sunshine Foundation, where we are going to be distributing laptop to students of need, and this is through the Tech Council, and I'm like doing it, you know, personally. And the B.A.R.A. Sunshine has created something called Tokens of Kindness. And so, I gave a couple out, what I had left. So, it's something new that they are trying to do, and it's kind of like the kindness rocks. So, hopefully, if you do receive a token of kindness, we hope it brings a smile to your heart. Always remember to spread the love, not the hate. I do want to thank CCEA and CASE and the teachers that have all, and even parents, you know, around about that have come up and, you know, told me about like the cellphone stuff, the behavior stuff. I hear it at home, too, from my kids, and, you know, as a mom and as a board member, I take it extremely seriously. So, hopefully, we will get a handle on this and see what we can do, what we're allowed to do within the law of the state. Happy Valentine's Day. Out in the lobby, you will find hugs, so spread the love and take a hug and give a hug. Scholarship applications are open. Again, you can go through the Community Foundation, continue to support various school sports, performance boosters, PTAs and PTOs. And I want to say good luck to all the students who are getting ready to try out for spring activities. A lot of them are just ending their winter ones, and we're full speed ahead. We are in the second half of the year. And I hope everyone had a wonderful 100 days of school. So, just a little joke, if you watch the Super Bowl, 87 plus 13 equals 100. And if anybody understood the 87 to 13, well, I hope you had a great Super Bowl.
Thank you very much. She always makes me chuckle about something. Dr. Dorsey, I never know what she's up to.
Okay. On January 11, I spoke to students in Mrs. Landry's and Mrs. Corber's Personalized Learning Environment Class at East Middle, and I'm grateful to them for the invitation to be a part of their classroom for the afternoon. I had the opportunity to discuss effective habits of mind to be successful, and I stressed the importance of managing impulsivity. And the students were great. They were a wonderful audience, and I told them I'd be checking back in with them a little bit later to see how it's going for them. So, I had that on my calendar to do. On the 12th, I attended the Curriculum Council Meeting, and we heard a couple of presentations that day. The first one was on the Unified Physical Education Program, and that was presented by Mr. Vandergrit, the Supervisor of PE and Health, and Mr. Vaughn, Instructional Consultant of Adaptive PE. And we also heard, secondly, information about the Elementary Core Reading Series, presented by Stephanie Dale. So, again, those were both wonderful presentations, and as always, thanks to Mr. Warnock for facilitating the meeting. Later on that evening, I had the opportunity to watch Stormy Sky's Fashion Show, and I was able to do that in the comfort of my home that evening. So, I certainly thank those responsible for having the video production team there and recording that event. And also, thanks to Mrs. Harris and her students for a wonderful fashion show. On January 18, I met with MAB staff and members of the Conference Program Committee to begin our initial work of planning this year's MAB conference. On January 30, I attended a Quarter-Scale Design Review Meeting for Sandy Mount Elementary Kindergarten and Pre-K Edition. And again, I only attended a few of these sessions, and I have found them to be very worthwhile. Kudos to the staff members for really knowing their buildings and being able to look at those plans and share ideas for how things could be situated differently to make things a little bit smoother and better for them once they come to fruition. On January 31, I was a part of the budget hearing and work session that we held. On February 1, I served as a primary source for a History Day project. I was interviewed by two Sykesville Middle School students who were interested in learning about the early days of integration in Carroll County Public Schools. Thanks to Ella and Max for an engaging dialogue, and also to Mrs. Mullenix for arranging time for this interview, and also thanks to Principal Brillhart. On February 6, I attended the Quarter-Scale Design Review Meeting for Friendship Valley for their K and Pre-K and Pride additions, and again, very worthwhile and valuable discussions. And we certainly are grateful for our construction and planning department folks who head that up for us. Again, they just do a wonderful job. Mr. Marx, and I'm trying to think, I'm sorry. Okay, who's our main one for that?
Mary Prokop.
No. Kane, Mr. Kane. I'm sorry, Bill. I hadn't written that down, and your name escaped me for the moment, but he and the members of the construction team sort of led that for us. So, again, I think once we actually come up with what these additions are going to look like, I think we'll be very pleased. On February 12, I attended our MAB Equity Committee Meeting, and that was our first committee meeting of the year with this particular team. And a lot of the members are new to the position, so we have some plans for, in the future, getting together and taking off again with looking at our MAB equity policy and how our systems are implementing the equity policy throughout the state. And finally, on February 13, I met with MAB staff and the co-chair to prepare for our next conference meeting as a part of our Planning Committee Meeting. So, those are my activities since our last board meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Whistler.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. I was out of the country the week of the 15th of January, and I missed the snow, and I hope everybody enjoyed the snow days. And I do want to say a quick thank you to the administrators and the maintenance personnel that didn't take a snow day but instead came to school, cleared the sidewalks, the parking lots, and made it safe for folks to return the next day. Just want to make sure you noted that we do appreciate your efforts. On January 23, after I returned to the country, I attended the Commissioner's Reception at the County Government Office Building. I appreciated seeing our federal legislators as well as leaders from our eight municipalities, and I really enjoyed hearing their feedback on how our schools make a difference in their communities. On January 24 and 25, I attended all four certificate ceremonies at the Career and Tech Center. Over 300 students earned vital credentials and work experience that will jumpstart their careers. I'm really grateful for the local businesses and community organizations that gave our students over $10,000 in scholarships and donations towards their first set of tools and future tuition expenses. On January 30, I watched our high school students in action during one of the mock trial days in our county courthouse. Many thanks to our high school teachers and the circuit court judges that worked a full day on the day that I saw it, and then devoted many hours later in the evening to give our students this learning opportunity. On January 31, I met with my colleagues at Central Office here to discuss the budget. And again, just a quick moment, as we send this budget to the Commissioners, it's very important to know that the state is forcing blueprint mandates without ample funding. Our county is facing a structural deficit of about $7 million. We're requesting an additional $11 million, and that would increase their deficit to nearly $18 million. I'm not confident that they'll be able to find all the funds we need. My colleagues and I appear could be faced with the unpleasant task of renegotiating employer group contracts or making significant cuts to our school system. So, to give one perspective, 60 teaching positions is approximately $5 million. I urge the General Assembly and stakeholders throughout our entire system to take this funding issue seriously and be flexible. We simply cannot tax our way out of this issue. More significant blueprints and costs are on the horizon next year. On February 5, I attended the grand reopening ceremony of Westminster Elementary's playground. This $180,000 project was made possible because parents, local businesses, and community groups raised 55 grand towards the cost, and our state delegation secured 125,000 more in bonds to replace the equipment. I want to thank them for giving our kids a safe place to play. Everybody wins when we collaborate and work together. On February 6, I attended the Community Overdose Action Town Hall at the County Government Office Building. I appreciate the governor's effort to hear from residents on how best to address addiction issues in our county and empower our local nonprofits and local government to protect our communities. On February 8, I attended the Family Life Advisory Committee Meeting at Central Office. As my colleague, Ms. Sevigny, mentioned, this important committee is working with staff to select age-appropriate content for the family life curriculum and create alternatives for parents and students. On February 10, on Saturday, I attended the all-county middle and high school band concert at South Carroll High School. It was great seeing all the parents and the Concert at South Carroll High School. It was great seeing all the parents and the phenomenal performances by our very best musicians. Whether it's academics, athletics, or arts, our students always rise to the top. On February twelfth, I participated in a Maryland Association of Boards of Education Legislative Committee Meeting. We reviewed pending legislation before the Maryland General Assembly and offered our thoughts on positions to take on numerous bills. And finally, uh, I was invited to the Finksburg Public Library on February twelfth to celebrate a Carroll County couple that has been married for seventy-four years and share the same birthday. John Price, a World War II Navy retiree that served aboard submarines in the Western Pacific in the war against Japan, celebrated his one-hundredth birthday. And while I was raised to never state a woman's age, John's wife Nina did give me permission to state that she's now ninety-seven. They both share a love for reading and helping veterans and children throughout our county. And that is my report.
Thank you very much. Um, throughout the month, I've attended quite a few athletic events, and I've been to numerous high schools. Francis Guykey, Manvau, uh, Winters Mill, Westminster High School. And it's just such a great evening when you see our, our children, our students participate in many wonderful athletic programs. And this weekend is the county wrestling tournament at Westminster High School. And I just wanted to let Mr. Kyler know that I announced that just for him specifically. Okay. And the other thing is, don't listen to the weather report on Friday night because they're only ever right or wrong fifty percent of the time. That's the job we all need. All right. I had the opportunity to stop. I went to visit Elmer Wolf Elementary School to give uh, best wishes to the retiring principal there, Tracy Belsky. And if anybody knows Tracy Belsky, she was always flitting around that school, uh, trying to always help out a teacher. When I went up there, she was in the caf, in the cafeteria teaching him how to tie knots. So, you know, you always have to track her down. Uh, other times I've been up there, she's been handing out crock pots in the evening and pork chops to families. That's the kind of principal she was. And uh, she, she retired after thirty years. And we thank her for her service and our dedication to Carroll County Public Schools. And I hope she enjoys her retirement and go ride her horse. Last week, I visited the cosmetology program at the Career and Tech Center. And it was absolutely amazing to see all the community members that were in there getting facials, getting haircuts, getting their hair dyed, getting their nails done. And uh, they, it is just a wonderful community activity. And it's done on Thursdays. But before that, I got caught in a fire drill there. And um, the thing that, it was, it was great to see that we are always prepared to do this. But there was one upsetting thing that did happen. I sat there right in front of the students on the other side of the driveway. And while the students were returning to the school, a car ran through there like a maniac. The, and I will never forget, the school counselor threw up her clipboard, tried to tell them to stop. But I just don't understand why people cannot slow down on school property. So um, they were wonderful, and it definitely needed to be a safety for our students and our employees. Um, I've been out and about talking to supervisors, principals, vice principals, SROs about um, phone usage. And I'm trying to take notes, keep things in my mind. And I'm also talking to parents and students. So I, but it's the gamut. So it'll be very interesting for that conversation. Um, throughout my travels, I'm always asked about uh, snow days. And it's been twice that I've been up to Manvau and we've had off two hours early and the kids come over and thank me. They, they get these emails before the game or during halftime of the game, and then they come over and thank me. But we had, we have five days built in to the calendar. And of yesterday, we have used three of those days. And word is that we can expect some cold weather with precipitation, with precipitation during the last two weeks of February and into March. But always remember in March, it may come like a ton, but it always melts fast. Uh, we do have some upcoming events. Uh, the superintendent will be holding two community town halls on blueprint. Um, the first meeting is Monday, February twenty-sixth at South Carroll High School at six-thirty PM. And the second meeting is on Monday, March twenty-fifth at the Career and Tech Center at six, six PM also. And if you remember, when she held these town halls last year, they were jam-packed. And guess what? Now other counties are doing it a year later. So we were always ahead and uh, we're doing another around just to let them know what's going on. And I thank Dr. McCabe for doing that. And this will give our, our students, and um, so anyway, and we also have the Maryland State Board of Education coming to visit the Career and Tech Center on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth. I'm probably stealing some of your thunder. Uh, this will give our students an excellent opportunity to showcase their programs and also to show off the school. And that's it? All right. Now we will move on. Superintendent Report. Take it away.
First this evening, I would like to congratulate Renee Butler from William Winchester Elementary School, who has been selected as the Maryland Elementary School Counselor of the Year by the Maryland School Counselor Association. Renee's first priority is to create a program that meets all student needs. During the last school year, she made a significant impact on student attendance by personally meeting with identified students facing attendance challenges and maintaining open dialogue with families. She also implemented a system of incentives to motivate students to attend school for five consecutive days and utilized visual aids to empower students to take ownership of their attendance and regain control over their academic success. Renee also volunteered to participate in a groundbreaking pilot program designed to assess every aspect of her counseling program. Her unwavering commitment to innovation in her field was evident as she eagerly welcomed the opportunity to serve as a role model, willingly sharing her comprehensive program and highlighting her data. Congratulations again to Renee on this much deserved recognition. I also would like to congratulate Piney Ridge Elementary School, which received a five hundred dollar prize in recognition of its staff, the staff's dedication and commitment to teaching computer science. Advanced academics teacher Karen Stump and media specialist Renee Cross worked with students on computer coding activities during the Hour of Code Week in December. All students at Piney Ridge participated in the event with the media team. Fourth and fifth grade advanced academic students worked with the youngest learners to bolster their understanding and confidence. Congratulations as well to Jason Breeden, a student at Century High School, whose artwork is featured in the two thousand twenty-three AP Art and Design Digital Exhibit. The exhibit features forty-six high school artists from four countries selected from more than seventy-four thousand students who submitted portfolios to the two thousand twenty-three AP Art and Design Exam. You may view Jason's artwork as well as his video explaining the artist's process and comments from Frank Reaver, art teacher at Century High School. And finally, February is Black History Month, and our schools are celebrating the achievements of African Americans and their contributions to the history of our nation. Individual schools are holding many activities throughout the month. You can find a sampling of these activities on our website, and photos and videos are being posted throughout the month on Facebook and Twitter.
Well, thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to presentations. And our first one is a blueprint update. And we will take it away with both Assistant Superintents.
Yes. So at our monthly meetings, we often have blueprint updates when there are changes or developments of significance at the state level. Tonight, Mr. O'Neill and Mr., and Mr. Shockney will share some updates in the planning process and pillars three and four.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe, and good evening, Board members. Just um, three quick updates, uh, one on the planning process overall, and then as Dr. McCabe mentioned, on pillars three and four. Uh, ju, just a reminder, we, we do a local implementation, comprehensive implementation plan each year. Last year was the first one, which was sort of just a, an initial uh, attempt more about establishing some, some overall general baselines uh, with the AIB. This year's version, what, what we're seeing in the template is much more of a comprehensive planning tool. And I would describe this as, this is sort of the living, evolving, annually changing and being revisited um, planning document. Um, at least for this first version of this new template, a portion of it's due in March. And then the more significant uh, remainder of the document, sort of strategies by pillars are due in May. And that's helpful to have a little more time. And I would also suggest that as we talk about this as sort of the, becoming the work of our system and the need to get out and talk to stakeholder groups more about this. I think Dr. McCabe may touch on this somewhat in her town halls. When we've talked about the flexibility we see forthcoming from the state going forward, my sense is this is where that resides in the future as well. So this new template is about uh, looking back at what you've accomplished in the prior year, but also setting um, goals out. Uh, it looks like about three years, at least if this is, if this first version is, is what becomes the norm. And I think that that work is what the AIB ultimately looks at, to not only determine if they release funding for the sub, full funding for the subsequent fiscal year, but that becomes the barometer for, okay, there's flexibility here over time. And are you working in good faith towards meeting those objectives? Uh, it, it becomes a very important document in that sense. And then I think Mr. Shockney wants to do an update on pillar three, the career-ready standard.
Sure. Just college and career-ready standard. Last month, we brought to you the proposed standard. Um, that standard was adopted uh, by MSD at their last meeting. Um, this will be phased in, but um, but, but essentially for, for next school year, FY twenty-five, um, we are still operating, our funding is still operating based upon um, the interim standard. But beyond that, um, the standard that's proposed, which includes um, two different pathways to reading, um, to meeting the CCR standard. Um, this is exactly what we, what we brought to you last month, but it was just adopted by the, um, by the, by the state. Um, so there'll be two different pathways, one of which will include successfully passing the NCAP, um, in ELA and mathematics. And then the other will include a, a GPA and um, a C or better in Algebra One. Um, w, we anticipate, um, as it says, an increase in CCR-identified students under the new, um, over the, over the new standard, um, but not back to um, the pre-FY twenty-five um, level. Um, so that will be a, an impact on us on funding. Um, but we will navigate that. Um, and then um, obviously, the, uh, we, if a student doesn't meet the CCR standard, we need to develop some support pathways. We are anxiously awaiting guidance uh, on those support pathways. What are the minimum requirements? What should they look like? Um, MSD has shared that we should have that information by fall of, of next year. So as we've been doing, we will carefully monitor um, the CCR standard. Um, and then obviously the support pathways that will, that pathway that will come with that.
And then um, under pillar four, which is the, the label for pillar four is more resources to ensure all students succeed. We've, we've touched on this briefly, but we haven't had much of a public conversation about an element of the blueprint referred to as community schools. And these are schools identified based on cer, certain thresholds of um, of students uh, who are in the free, of the free and reduced meal category. The blueprint and the state refers to these schools as being identified as concentrations of poverty. We previously have not had schools that qualified under the state standard, and we do now. Um, we have two. We have Crossroads Middle School, which is a subset of the Gateway School identified. And we also have fir, for the first year this year, Tawnytown Elementary identified. And, and these two schools are barely meeting the threshold. They're, they're just sort of at the lowest level of entry. Um, what it means is that when a school is identified as concentration of poverty schools, you, you begin a process to eventually uh, provide wraparound services at that school or, or for the students in that school community. Those could be medical services or mental health services or, or those sort of related social services. And the way the blueprint uh, works through the process is that in the first year a school is identified, you receive an initial grant to hire a required um,
Community Schools Coordinator?
Community Schools Coordinator. For some reason, I can never remember that title. And the Community Schools Coordinator will conduct a needs assessment of the wraparound services that best serve that community of students. And then in years two and beyond, as long as the school remains eligible, you receive an additional grant based on the number of students to help pay for and sustain those services. Um, there's a provision in the blueprint that if a school loses eligibility, no longer meets that threshold, then, then those grants phase out. The, the per pupil grant is gone immediately when the, or in the first fiscal year after the school doesn't meet the threshold. And the personnel grant to pay for the, the coordinator phases out after two years. And if we have a concern here, because overall, these are, these are great services to provide students, it is that our schools are barely meeting that threshold. And so there's a likelihood that they make, they could phase out. And so you're building a program and building services that, that then you want to, you either have to lose or figure out how to sustain locally. Take any questions, or we'll move on to Mr. Diaz.
Well, I am looking at Ms. Sevigney.
Two separate questions, so I'll, I'll hit the, the. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so two questions. Uh, the, I'll ask the first one on, on the community schools. So just, we understand the situation with Crossroad Middle because it's a, it's a very small student population, right, that that's based on. But for Tawnytown, is it, Tawnytown Elementary, is it because the, the economic level of that community is deteriorating or has thresholds for, for the poverty um, constraint changed or?
So the state, the statewide threshold for qualification, um, whatever the opposite of graduates is, it goes down every year. So it started, I think, at eighty percent in the initial year of the blueprint. And it's, and it's worked down systematically to sixty percent. So sixty percent of the students at, at Tawnytown would need to meet the threshold. And um, by this year's state data, student data, Tawnytown is at, I believe, point five nine seven four percent. So rounding up, it just meets the threshold. If Tawnytown's uh, demographic continues to stay level or, or even trend up a bit, then, then Tawnytown would be, would remain consistent there. And I think Tawnytown, I think Nick would agree, Tawnytown seems like one of, one of our more ideal locations to have a community school. There's a lot of students who live very nearby who walk, et cetera. It's just the concern that should the demographic go slightly the other way in a given year, um, you, you might lose eligibility. Once identified, I should have said this, once identified, it is then based on a three-year average. So that's helpful. With, with Crossroads, it's a much different scenario. There was kind of a one-year spike in a very small population. And I would say Crossroads is probably already phasing out, even as Nick's trying to build the program to implement. And so that's kind of a trickier scenario.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you for that. Um, and the, the second question was on the CCR standard. Um, Mr. Shockney, you had said that, that it might have a funding implication for us. Do you, do you have a feel for the magnitude of that?
Yes, that's my part of it. Yeah. So statewide, um, the change from twenty-four, which was based upon a pre-blueprint proxy number that, that MSD applied, to next year's number, which was what Nick referred to as the interim standard. Statewide, the total number of students went down a little over forty percent, depending on your math, forty-two-ish percent. Uh, our number in Carroll went down fifty-eight percent. And so that's uh, in the grand scheme of our budget and blueprint funding as a whole, that's not the largest number in the world of, of the overall funding. But it's significant in the sense that that's uh, CCR, particularly dual enrollment, is a number we've been chasing to try to get to what the blueprint, uh, the blueprint baseline funding need will be. Uh, it's been in all your budget presentations. We're still getting there. It's looking more like two million a year at least. Um, this means less funding going forward. And, and so where Nick had the bullet point about in twenty-six, we think it will go up. That's true, but it'll, it'll go up from a much lower base of the interim standard based, as opposed to the, you know, the pre-interim standard level. There's a, there's a per pupil dollar amount attached to each uh, student who's identified as CCR-eligible. And that's important because that's the money that you would use first to build dual enrollment and build AP and, and build uh, another missing element that Nick mentioned is build CTE programs, although they're kind of missing from the standard at the moment. And so when you, you know, if the number's lower and you lose funding, that's more local money to figure out how to, how to pay for that. And then for what it's worth, and it doesn't matter because the law is law, but for what it's worth, there's sort of a, something counterintuitive about the fact that the blueprint provides you money to build programs for the students who meet the standard, requires you to provide support pathways for the students who don't yet meet the standard, but there's no funding stream specifically for the support pathway. So that's all sort of a local and/or a foundation endeavor.
And in the, I don't want to use the word interim, but because that's also refers to the standard. But in the, in, in the immediate uh, future, um, a student's ability to meet the CCR standard does not impact their, their, their CCR pathway, um, as it stands now. The blueprint states that once the blueprint is fully implemented, as determined by the AIB, um, then it would be a requirement for a student to become CCR before entering um, a pathway. That is not where we are now. Um, that is not where we are in the immediate future. Um, we'll obviously strive and work to build our students' capacity to achieve We'll obviously strive and work to build our students' capacity to achieve the CCR standard, but in the, the immediate timeframe, that's not going to impact their ability to participate in a CTE program, dual enrollment, or an AP program.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Pataglia.
That's what I was going to ask regarding the career in tech, that this does not have any effect on what makes a student eligible for career in tech?
As it stands, no, but to be clear, in the blueprint, once the AIB determines that the blueprint, blueprint has been fully implemented, and there's no, there's no timestamp to that, there's no projection for when that will be, correct me if I'm wrong in saying that, Mr. O'Neill, but, but no, but it's, I was in a meeting with MSD this morning, where this was reiterated, that, you know, currently, a student's ability to meet the CCR standard cannot impact their ability to access a, a, a CCR pathway.
That was, that was something I did hear from a parent, the concern was, okay, when my kid does not come out of a 2.5 GPA, they would never qualify for masonry, or car repair, or anything of that magnitude. I mean, that's, to me, that's what career in tech is for, is for the students who academically, you know, they struggle, but they could just be amazing at a career path. And, and that's, that's something I just want to make sure the public understands, too.
In my opinion, the standard that's been adopted is a great measure of college readiness. I'm not so sure that that is the best measure of career readiness.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I would, I would add the time concern, because a student, I mean, there's a couple of different ways you could look at this, Ms. Pataglia. By miss, this is in my view of the world, by missing, by not including career-ready as part of this standard, I would, I would suggest that we have former students today who are licensed welders, or electricians, or whatever, who have been through our program and achieved an industry standard, and are working in that, in that field, who wouldn't be, who wouldn't meet the standard to move into that pathway. And Nick's right, right now, they're saying, don't stop anybody from taking anything. They need to address career-ready. And then also, those, those programs may address fewer students, but they tend to cost more because of the equipment involved, and so not receiving funding is, is also not helpful to the overall cost here. So hopefully, the state will, if you look back at the state board discussions up to when they approved this, there, some members had an awareness that, hey, maybe we're forgetting, maybe we're not yet including career-ready students here. The state needs to return to that and finish that half of this discussion at some point. Is that fair?
Any other comments? Thank you. And now, we will move on to our next presentation, pillar three, successful workforce. Dr. McCabe?
When the board approved the new strategic plan in December, the plan included a schedule for reporting to the board on implementation of the plan. February is the first month for a report on one of the pillars of the plan. Mr. Diaz is here to share some updates on pillar two, successful workforce. With the plan's adoption in December, baseline data was set for the year, so Mr. Diaz will focus on strategies and efforts to improve recruitment and retention in a time when market factors are more challenging than they ever have been. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members, and Dr. McCabe, and all of you who are here this evening. My pleasure to chat with all of you. I could talk for an hour, but they told me 10 minutes, I'm going to try to go through all of this information.
That, that is correct.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Eckert used to go like this.
You got it.
And some days, I feel like doing that.
Right.
Okay.
I won't take offense. So one, several points of clarification, as we get into the first slide. Unlike the blueprint, our strategic plan, the, we, they have pillars in the blueprint, we have pillars in our strategic plan, so we are pillar two in the blueprint, when we're talking about staff, and, and so on, and career ladder, and so on. For this purpose, we're pillar three, same, similar information, but just to keep that a, a little bit, and the alignment is a little bit different. When it comes to, to dates in, in, in the area of human resources across the state, it's important to stress that our data reporting has to match a state report that we complete in, in the fall every year. So the data in pillar three, that, that is really baseline data, and it, it represents an October 16th to October 15th annual cycle. That allows the state data, that then is used in blueprint work, and, and our local work here as well, to, to match. As you can imagine, there are different calendars, a school year calendar, a fiscal year calendar, this is the state staffing calendar, so that information in, in the, in the strategic plan currently for pillar three is baseline data. As you know, employee data is always fluid, there's always a lot of movement going on. Teaching, and of course, and professional staff, that staffing tends to be more in a school, in line with a school year, there's certification and licensure changes throughout the, the year, but hiring of employees is certainly a, definitely a year-round effort every year. It never really stops. Thinking of our colleagues in our team who hire for AFSMI employees, custodial maintenance, instructional assistants, that hiring is happening all the time. Our pillar three objectives, again, for the strategic plan, include those listed on the left. We, we're tasked with recruiting qualified candidates for all CCPS positions. Recall that we are the largest employer in Carroll County by far, to support staff, to build the blueprint for Maryland's future, to recruit and retain diverse employees reflective of our student community, class size, and to staff schools to implement the, the blueprint career ladder. Now, the data that's already in the report includes the following baseline numbers. Our, our, our teaching staff, from a certification and licensure perspective, is nearly 95% fully certificated. However, that number was larger even a few years ago, as it matches a pattern across the state of difficulty in finding individuals who are fully certificated. We have one of the lowest, but for us, it was an increase. And of course, when we're looking at recruitment and retaining of, of diverse employees who are reflective of our student body, we are looking at that in, in all categories, so race, ethnicity, gender, background, everything, so that we match our student bodies. It's important that, that our staff is reflective of our students. From a race and ethnicity perspective, like many across the state, we have a lot of work to do in that area to match that. Currently, our percentage of minority staff is about 6.4%. A percentage of students who are minority is about 21.5%. The Department of Human Resources focuses on the areas on the right part, side of the screen, of course, recruiting and hiring, employee relations, certification, licensure, retirement, leave, benefits, a lot of different components. And one that's not included, that sometimes takes a great deal of time, is employee investigations. We're involved in all of those pieces. Our human resources staff, it's a little representative photo there, we have some of them in the audience, I'll introduce in a minute, but one of the key bits of data that's not necessarily in the strategic plan, but we thought it'd be important to, to share, in, in the world of human resources, not only is it the number of hires that's important, or the number of individuals who leave, but all of that together, what we refer to as transactions. The number of transactions in the time period from October 16th, '22 to October 15th, 2023, was 4,226. So that means when an individual is transferred, or they're hired, or they retire, all of those are counted, and if you notice, it's about a 42% increase since 2018, and a lot of that has to do with the number of individuals perhaps who are retiring, the number of people who rehire, and so on. And a key piece of the year is that we hire 268 certificated hires, all with a very, I'll say lean, but mean, but nice, staff, where we are in human resources, in a good way. And I have some individuals here in the audience, and I'll introduce Kim Mailey, who is our supervisor of human resources, and I'll talk a little bit more, but Kristi Rep is here as well, as our head recruiter, as we look into our next few slides. As many of you may know, Maryland is referred to as an import state. What that means is that our universities, combined, public and private, do not produce enough teachers to fill all of the positions across 24 public school systems in the state of Maryland. For many, many years, we've relied on other states, Pennsylvania, New York, Illinois, Ohio, variety, Michigan, some of the states south of us as well, who produce a surplus of teachers, that has changed, because there's been a national decline of individuals who are selecting education as a profession. That's a key piece. We touched a little bit already on minority recruiting, and, but the language there in COMAR, or the Code of Maryland Regulations, states, as you can see, right, that our school systems, right, need to work and have plans and procedures for the attainment of racial balance at the various levels of the public school system, reflective of the composition of the population of the respective jurisdictions. Now, while some might think, well, certainly, this might be a new regulation, if you look a little bit further down, it talks about plans and procedures in a report submitted to the State Department of Education by January 1, 1971. So this has been a goal in the state of Maryland, and a regulation frankly, since that time. It's been a long time, and we're still working towards that, but we're not there. When it comes to recruiting, recruiting frankly, is all of our jobs, from elected officials, teachers, staff, community members, it's really up to all of us. Of course, we're right there in the forefront as the Department of Human Resources, but it's really up to all of us, to talk with our friends and families and individuals, to encourage individuals to move into the profession, and of course, we work with those, you know, with those individuals that send referrals, and we're out there. We've been able to elaborate and build on our recruiting efforts across the state, and part of the blueprint as well, refers to growing our own efforts. The images on the right are our TAM, or Teacher Academy of Maryland students, and early childhood education completers as well, visiting last year, they visited this year here as well. These are high school students that are aspiring teachers, they come and visit central office and do other activities as part of their academics, and we recruit them frankly, as if they were college students, getting them ready, and they're excited about joining in the profession in any capacity. We also take a look and then work with our non-certificated staff, and talk with them about possibilities pursuing teaching certification. Sometimes there are individuals who may not be aware that they possibly could be considered for a teaching position, and, and we have another visitor in our, it's today, Mr. Garrett Bean, I'll have him wave here. He's an example, a CCPS grad who became an instructional assistant, and is now a special education teacher. So growing our own looks and feels different sometimes, individuals who are career changers and so on, so thank you for being here.
We all thank him. Yes. That it works.
Right. And, and to elaborate on that, in addition to the recruiting efforts on the screen, of course, in the back here, my colleagues, and whether it's, you know, Steve Wernick is Director of Curriculum and Instruction, all the supervisors, the teacher hiring process, the staff hiring process includes school-based administrators, includes central office, includes HR, and so on. And we've been able to expand, there was an increase in the budget for FY24, which we were very, very pleased to see. We were able to increase attendance at, at recruiting events, in particular with an emphasis in face-to-face events. While virtual events have their, their strengths, teaching is a people profession, and we rely on that ability to speak with, make eye contact with, have conversations. Have you ever considered, because when we're out of state, they may not know where Carroll County, Maryland is. Of course, there are several Carroll Counties across the United States, and we're able to tell them, and, and really, you know, build on our positive reputation, and to get them here. We've been doing teacher screening interview days here, a different look of our recruiting calendar. Our recruiting calendar now includes, we've, we've had already recruiting events, but about 15 recruiting events focusing on teachers coming up here in the spring, and trying to get out as wide as possible to where the supply of teachers perhaps is a little bit better. In addition, we've increased the size and diversity of our recruiting pool. Historically, it's been primarily administrators and supervisors, but we're starting, beginning some steps to include teacher leaders in our recruiting efforts. They love to see us at, at, you know, a candidate will come to our table at a recruiting event, oh, you're the Director of Human Resources, that's wonderful, but they really want to meet a teacher. What's it really like? Right? And of course, we had some training even this week with some of those first few that are going to be helping from the teacher leader ranks to get out there and talk with them about what it's like to teach in Carroll County Public Schools. You'll notice the image all the way on the right, I want a little shout out to our friends and partners at McDaniel College, who've been working with us through the Teacher Collaborative Grant, supporting some of our teachers who are aspiring National Board Certified teachers, that's been very helpful, and a, a grant they have as well to award fellowships for individuals who are career changers and looking to join the teaching force. We partner with them, with interns coming to our buildings, and often, if they do well, they interview well, and they become teachers in Carroll County. We had a substitute teacher in hourly employee job fair, we're working with Carroll Workforce Development, the Carroll County NAACP, I mentioned McDaniel College as well, and we're expanding those conversations with other community groups, whether they're civic groups, religious based groups, anyone. We will talk with everybody to make sure they understand the need, and, and what we can offer as an employer across all positions. Of course, our teaching is our most numerous, but we need, we need everybody to focus on recruiting for all positions. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and I thank you for your time.
Dr. Dorsey?
I guess I was expecting to see a little more data.
Yes.
A little more quantitative data concerning where we are with different things. I think in the past, we, we've seen some of that. You know, when you speak about increasing your diverse employees, you know, what is it looking like now? Where are we? So again, that's one of the things that, that I would like to see. I know you have some data indicated with the number of transactions that you certainly have had to deal with through the year. But again, I just wanted to have the data sort of support what's, what's being shared qualitatively. And, you know, I even appreciate all you've done as far as recruitment and all, and, you know, you certainly mentioned about teaching leaders, or teacher leaders, being included as well for your recruiting trips. In the past, I have also known that as people are, are interested in, in interviewing with the system, sometimes they want to hear from the beginning teachers, those who've had just a few years, maybe one or two years, because they're closer sometimes in age to the prospective candidates. So those were just a couple of the comments that I wanted to make.
Sure.
Concerning this.
And if I, if I may, the, so the, the data that are included in the actual strategic plan that was not a slide, are the baseline data, that give the percentages, for example, of individuals certificated, who's NBC, and the others. This year, at this time next year, there will be a report on the data one year later. So for us, the, the data's a little bit lagging, because we have to match the state report timeframe.
So you're saying in the future, then?
So, yes.
And you have the current data from the December meeting? Was it the December meeting?
Yeah, the, the plan.
Oh, sure.
The plan you approved in December is the data, so we're only, what, two months out from that? So that's the data Ernesto will update each year. So that's on the website for, for anyone who would access it on the little, what do you call those, the little boxes at the bottom left, if you click on Strategic Plan and then go to Pillar Two?
Yeah, I don't know whether there's a way of, of presenting it all together, I mean, but.
For future monthly presentations, include the, the link to the plan as part of it?
Right, I mean, so we can sort of see it both ways. And again, I can certainly go back through my past documents and pull the information up, but again, just going through it qualitatively, it's like, okay, what were those numbers actually like?
Nick actually sort of owns the plan document, but we'll, we'll make that happen. So for future monthly presentations, we'll always go back to whatever the current set of data is to include it then.
Okay, thanks.
Very good.
Thank you.
The, the challenge, because in our, in our strategic plan, we have a reporting schedule. So I think as we go, I think it's the difficult part is, is the timing of trying to, you know, trying to pace out the presentations in a way that's balanced, but also at the same time where we can present on the numbers in a timely way that's not, not conflicting. So that may be a revision that we make over time, if we need to adjust a reporting schedule to be able to make, you know, that work. But I think that's, we try to pace out the, the different CCPS strategic plan pillar reports when we, when we have data, but I know this is early, so we might need to make a, make a change.
Right, and I hear the calendar year, so to speak, is a little different as well, so I think that plays into it too, but just an observation on my part.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whistler?
Thank you, Madam President. Two questions. One, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there's a bill before the legislature to extend the timeline given to conditionally certified employees to get their credentials not within a two-year period, but now a three-year period, and it looks like that's gaining traction in the Maryland Assembly. Have you heard of any non-certificated employees or conditional, are they, do, do people need three years to do that, and do you think that will help retain teachers?
I think sometimes more, you know, more time, it can be helpful, but let me, let me answer it in, in this manner. So there are some updated COMAR regulations that are, our, our team, for example, is attending training on that very soon. So just a preview for all of you, moving forward, you'll start hearing the word licensure more often than certification, moving forward. From a state level, that's in, in COMAR regulations, to distinguish between a teacher's license now and National Board Certification. So moving forward, you'll hear that, I didn't want to get it, but our, our conditional teachers, who, by the way, sign a provisional contract. who by the way, sign a provisional contract. The provisional contract is a year-to-year contract. The current state is that they basically get about four years to get themselves fully certificated. If they are not able to do that, then you run into situations, which happen every once in a while, where an individual is working with us conditionally, they were not able to get all the credits that they needed. And the only way they can remain at that point is as a long-term substitute teacher. So sometimes we've lost people, they just, you know, they didn't, they didn't make it or they, you know, they, they take a pretty significant cut and lose their benefits if they had benefits through us. So I guess generally speaking, a little bit more time, it could be helpful. However, setting that distinct start and end does put a little pressure because we want them to get them certificated as soon as possible. So that, that would be my, my response to that.
Yeah, I, I do appreciate the staff's continual awareness that we need to keep at a minimum the number of conditionally certified teachers, again, about five to six percent, which is, which is great compared to other jurisdictions in Maryland.
And if I could add one, I think you have another question, if I may.
Sure.
A, a conditionally certified teacher, so that definition, there are several categories or sort of flavors of that. Some individuals are career changers, are coming with a degree, so conditionally certified. Every once in a while though, you may have a person who was fully certificated, went through a program, but for whatever reason, that their certification laps. So then they are considered conditionally certified. So there's, there's a mixture of individuals in that category.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, the other thing is, I'm not sure if the public is aware, but there are major cuts in teachers and staffs in Howard County and Baltimore County. Do you think that might help us from a recruiting perspective? If they're laying off or removing hundreds of positions in, say, Howard County and Baltimore County, does that help improve the prospect for recruiting teachers for Carroll?
Yeah, and I think, so broadly speaking, I would say yes. We were always very interested in talking with anybody who's interested in, in working for, for our students and in our communities here in Carroll County Public Schools. I would, I would just add that the current time of year, you know, when budgets are being determined and so on, sometimes that information, you know, we're going to be most interested, what's happening as we move into May, June, early part of July. So for those who, who may not know or perhaps are listening, if you're a tenured teacher in the state of Maryland, you have a July 15th resignation deadline. So we would encourage anyone who's interested to begin the application process now. But if they're tenured in a Maryland public school system, they must resign from their current Maryland public school system employer by July 15th so that we can offer them a position here. If they're non-tenured, it's a May 1st resignation deadline, which effectively means they're resigning before their school year has even ended. And we aren't 100% sure what vacancies we even have. So that's a bit of a risk sometimes for a non-tenured individual. And of course, conditional teachers are always non-tenured. So they, they're always perpetually looking at a May 1st. So broadly speaking, we, we're excited about talking about our school system with anybody. But I think it may be too early to know exactly whether those projected cuts actually turn into actual people who are looking for positions or whether they're absorbed through attrition in those respective school systems.
Right, and talking with colleagues in Baltimore County, Howard County, I had conversations with a few of them over the last two weeks. They are doing the right thing in giving some of those employees advanced notice. So hopefully, we're interacting with those HRs in Baltimore and Howard County and maybe scooping up some of that great talent.
Yes, we have a friendly rivalry with all of them.
I would like to make a comment on your first question because I, I do know what happens to some of those, those individuals. They get into that school and then they may be tapped to ask to coach our help with, with drama or help with something else. And that takes hours away from them going to school in the evenings. Then, when school's over, just like all, all of us had to go, we had to go to school, but they've got to have a job to pay for those bills, you know, to help them out. So I understand why they may need a little bit longer, longer time. Because the ones that do get into, involved with school with extracurricular activities is wonderful. But yeah, that, that can be a problem and they need, they need more time. So it just, we need to work with them and we don't need to lose them, that's for sure.
Yeah, no, I support the two to three-year extension. I was a, I was a conditionally certified teacher myself in Baltimore County when I first started, going from the military to teaching, the Troops to Teachers Program. So, you know, that extra year may be beneficial. So I'm, I'm glad they're doing that at the legislature.
Ms. Savigny.
Oh, I just wanted to make a quick comment, kind of along the same lines as Dr. Dorsey, about the, the data. I think it would be really helpful anytime we go through a presentation regarding the strategic plan, if we could kind of have a, like, at least the page of the metrics of, you know, kind of keep it front and center in front of us, like, this is what we're trying to achieve as part of the strategic plan. So to just kind of remind us and see specifically what kind of progress we think we're making against those metrics. Understanding that, you know, we, the most up-to-date data was as of November, right? So there isn't necessarily an update, but I think just, because we, we have these quarterly updates. So if we can just kind of have those sheets in front of us, that would be really helpful.
And I, I understand with where they're coming from because, hey, we're in a new, we're in a new era with, with a new timelines for the state and blueprint and AIB. So we just have to, we have to match those, match those together. So thank you. Anything else? Thank you very much. All right, now we will move on. Whoops, I'm sorry ma'am, go right ahead. Got one more?
I'm back.
Actually, I don't see it because the water bottles and the water bottles, but that's okay.
There we are. Hello, I have a question on something that you sort of mentioned in your presentation. It was about our students growing into the workforce, hopefully. And I noticed that we have people in the room that have done that. And I just wanted to, you know, comment on how our students truly can be and should be the future of what a successful workforce is, right? And so I think that one idea that we should try implementing in the future is putting student interns at the CCPS Central Office. I think it would be a great way to implement more interest in students because I know that so many students are interested in the behind-the-scenes and what goes on. And we currently in CCPS, we have a student internship program in which we have internship coordinators that send students all over the community and all around Carroll County and even outside of Carroll County to go to where their future job interests are. And this includes legal internships, this includes environmental internships. A plethora of amazing internship opportunities. And having internships specifically at Central Office or in other ways directly, like showing students a direct way to learn how the kind of behind-the-scenes work would be a really great way to sort of push helping students want to join this amazing county and its sort of education.
Yes, no, I very much appreciate that. And I know it wasn't a slide and perhaps, you know, we'll, so, but let me just share as well. We have had interns at Central Office in the past, not always, but primarily in tech services, also in finance department. Because as you know, this building, but others, is all, you know, the business side, HR, all of those other pieces that, you know, take a lot of energy to make a system of this size run. And also tied to the blueprint, the apprenticeship programs as well. So those, those are just starting to get off the ground. Some of the newest ones are focused on apprenticeships for individuals who are seeking perhaps teaching or instructional assistance, but point well taken. We do have a handful, but certainly learning about the school system as an employer of choice in all positions is very important. So I appreciate that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we will move on to the construction report.
Mr. Marx is here for any questions that board members may have about the construction report this month.
All right, I, I do have one comment. And normally I was waiting for Ms. Savigny, but I'm going to jump ahead for one thing.
I'll go right ahead.
No, I just thought on Spring Garden, is that the correct date? Did you have a question about that? Correct year, 23? Okay. On Spring Garden, work to commence and scheduled completion August 18th, is that true? Is that the correct dates on that one? I just wondered.
Yes, for the HVAC, it's done. We're leaving it there because we don't have, we don't have a generator set.
Okay, I was, okay, well, there was a reason for it to be there, yes.
Yeah, the HVAC is done and functioning well.
Okay, I just wondered because it said scheduled completion and then, okay, thank you.
No problem.
Ms. Savigny.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Marx. I was just hoping we might get an update on, on how things are going with East Middle and what the estimated, like, fully completion date will be.
They're trying to make dates and we're, we're pushing for, for dates and then we get bad weather.
Understood.
Right now, there's a mini lake out front from the past storm of this week. So they're working around it, they're doing everything they can. There are people there, even right when the meeting was starting, I was looking on camera and there were electricians putting things up and people are working where they can. We buried most of the rock already in pits that we had, you know, taken care of with blasting. There's a little bit more left. They've been moving some dirt off-site that was excess that they needed to do. That was right before the storm, they finished a lot of that. So the roadway is getting closer, much closer to getting degraded. We just need it drier. The, the stairway that we're building up to the Longwell parking lot, it's just too wet to start putting the concrete in for there. And then the walls finish after that, you know, the segmented walls we have going up around it. But we're trying, we're trying as fast as we can. And, you know, we're, we're pushing hard to, to get those dates. But there, I would say within the next month to two months, we'll be really close if it stays dry. It has to stay dry. We have stormwater management still to build at the back of the parking lot in the front. Most of the main pipes are already in, that's the good news. So we just need it dry to finish that front part out.
We cannot control Mother Nature.
I know.
And you guys are doing the best you can, I understand it.
We're trying. And when we get more dates and we get things firmed in, you know, we'll let you all know.
And hopefully, we're staying at or below the supplemental budget that we provided.
Yes, yes.
That was really, what I was kind of aiming at was staying below.
All right.
So always know that delays cause issues with the, with that, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I need a motion for the approval of appointments by Dr. Dorsey, seconded by, by Ms. Pataglia.
I have one recommendation for appointments this evening, which is to fill a temporary opening while an administrator is on leave. So Pete Lester from Facilitator of Student Support at Liberty High School to Acting Assistant Principal at Liberty High School.
Comments, questions? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. At this time, I need a motion for the approval of Award of Bids by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by?
I'll second.
By Ms. Savigny.
There are four items on the monthly Award of Bids. The first is water service entry repairs at Francis Scott Key. And this is a contract to make repairs to the water main line at FSK. Secondly, we have bleacher replacements at South Carroll High School and Francis Scott Key. And this is a contract to replace the bleachers in these two schools' gymnasiums. Third, welding equipment and supplies. And this is part of the ongoing outfitting of the Career and Tech Center. And lastly, we have technology education equipment, which is a 3D printer for Project Lead the Way at Career and Tech.
Ms. Savigny.
So Dr. McCabe, I just had a real quick question about number two, which is the replacement bleachers out South Carroll and FSK. Were these, I mean, these are supposed to be coming out of the local and state CIP, but we didn't actually have these as a CIP project in the, in the CIP budget, right?
Shouldn't be state CIP, I think it's the local infrastructure renewal account. So that's the local project account that you, the board, that have been populating periodically with year-end money, fund balance from time to time.
Okay, that's what I wanted to understand. So it would be coming from that fund rather than the, the typical CIP request? Because I wasn't seeing any projects that kind of fit that category.
Not, not a state-approved project at all. This is how we handle operational maintenance now, for many years. We, we use that local CIP project to make it go.
Right, okay, and that 567, so that the funds are there to, to cover this with no?
Yeah, you, you repopulated that project account last fiscal, last fiscal year. So we're in good standing there.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
I will say, I am so glad that you are replacing the, the bleachers at Francis Scott Key. And I was up there and a lady fell and my son-in-law helped her get up as she was walking up the, the bleachers. And I know they're older and they don't have hand railings and it's a big step. I learned to not take the big, big step. There's a little key to that, you take a step, there's a little step underneath there to that. But they do need to replace and it was just a safety issue. And I've seen the older generation fall. I sit on the bottom or the second one and I'm not trying to go up those because they are rickety-rackety right now. So, you know, I'm just, but I have seen that and I did see her fall. And thank God, Dan was there to help her get up and help her the rest of the way up. But I am so glad to see that happen. All right, any other comments? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a, a motion. Now, we need to do this in three separate sections. So the first one, I will need a motion for, to approve the FY25 operating fund budget requested by major budget categories as presented. Do I have? So moved by Dr. Dorsey and seconded by Ms. Pataglia.
Okay, so I'll go over all of it at once and then we'll break it up, break it out into the groups. At the February meeting each year, the board approves its annual budget request to the commissioners. We had an early budget work session in December where we outlined the budget picture. And then in January, I presented the proposed FY25 operating budget. We also had a joint meeting in January where we discussed budget with the commissioners. At the very end of January, we held a public hearing followed by a work session. There were only two speakers who supported the proposed budget. During the work session, the board made no revisions. Therefore, the budget before you this evening reflects the proposed budget from January. Once approved, it goes to the county for the commissioners' consideration as part of their annual process. I anticipate that we will have an agency hearing with them in March, another joint meeting, and then they will hold their public hearing on May 6th at the Carroll Arts Center. Once we have final revenue from the county, we reconcile a final FY25 budget in May. For approval, you must approve the budget by the operating budget major categorical totals, the Food Services Fund Budget and the Debt Service Fund Budget. President Herbert, you would need a motion for each approval. We will display the specific budget amounts for each action.
All right, so we have a, a motion on the floor to approve the FY25 operating fund budget. Ms. Savigny.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments before we go to the vote. Understand that my background is that I'm an actuary and I've, I've done decades of financial projections and budget-setting processes. So this is very much in my wheelhouse. At the, at the same time, Ms. Herbert, you and I have been involved in this for seven years now.
We have been together, yes.
And I'm very proud of the work that we've done for the last seven years, making sure that we always got our teachers at least a step increase, at least the value of a step increase. And in many cases, much more than that, we've increased the, we've improved the competitiveness of our teacher salaries over the seven years that we've been here. And we've done that through collaborative work with the commissioners, which continues today. And even, I, I believe most of those years, the commissioners didn't fully fund our request, but it was always pretty close, right?
Because of what we have done.
Because we set up a process, we set up an understanding of, you know, the, kind of the, the growth trajectory that we were expecting and this is what we needed to meet. And even last year, we, we put in a budget request that was significantly larger because all of the looming concerns with blueprint. And the commissioners gave us $6 million extra dollars over budget last year, which we, we can't thank them enough for, right? Like, it really helps stem the gap, like, trying to help us figure out how to implement blueprint in a fiscally prudent fashion, right? And, and so this year, what I'm struggling with is the fact that this is another significant increase over what the commissioners have in the budget for us. So it's $11 million over, so we've never gone with that large of a gap between what the commissioners already had sort of allocated to us, right? So I'm concerned that if we, if this is the budget that we pass, I believe, and, and if the commissioners were to fully fund it, I believe this is the way that we should spend those dollars, right? So that's not what I have. So that's not what I have concern with. My concern is that if the Commissioners don't or can't fully fund it, it's such a big gap that how do we get there? It's going to involve potential renegotiations, it's going to involve potential headcuts, headcount cuts, it's going to involve potential cuts to student services, and that's the concern that I have. Like, and that's kind of the inherent risk that we have every year, right, that we have to figure this out before we know how much money the Commissioners can give us, right? And then it's kind of an exercise to go back and edit it after the fact, so.
And it's an exercise that is backwards.
It's an exercise that is backwards, and it's almost mandated that way by law, but it's, Dick Weaver used to, you know, our former Commissioner used to always say that.
I've been watching since 1973, and it is backwards.
Right, and so that's, I came in here tonight thinking, I can't in good conscience vote for this budget because I'm so concerned about potential implications on students, student performance, and student outcomes, based on what happens if the Commissioners can't fund this. But I feel that we need to be able to send the message to the Commissioners that this...
Donna, excuse me, I do understand, I really do, because we've worked together for seven years, and this is our eighth budget, this is a tough one, and we've never had mandates before. And it's soon be the law, and I understand where you're coming from. But I think we can get this done, and I really think, working with the Commissioners, it'll all work out. I, in my heart, and I know we can work with them, and that's the best thing that we have done, you and I have done the last, and I'm not saying none of you have, but, but we had to start when we ran eight years ago, that we had to work with Commissioners. And we have been very lucky to be able to work with the Commissioners and work hand in hand, and I think one of the best things we ever did last year was give them that full notebook on what we are spending, dollar for dollar, penny for penny, because every county does not do that. And every Commissioner will have that in their hands, because I'm going to ask for you all to do that, and I thought that was a very good idea, but I understand your concerns.
Right.
I do understand that, but I will, I'll talk later on how, but yeah, but I understand because you have always been a numbers girl. And I understand that.
Right, and that's where I'm really struggling with this, because there, the underlying assumptions behind this budget, right, like, we're doing some things that aren't really required by the Blueprint this year, right? We're expediting some of those, right? And I have a concern with that, like, the impact that that's having on the rest of the system, and I'm also concerned with the long-term trajectory of costs behind what we're doing. Now, a lot of this is driven by the Blueprint.
Right.
But it really, so the path that we're on of, you know, an $18 million increase to the county request versus last year, that's an unsustainable trajectory of costs, right? Like, they're, right, and we're only seeing the beginning of it, so that's why I'm, so you understand my concerns.
I do understand that, and I know, when I, we go and ask them for $18 million, it's what you call negotiations. And I have my faith, and we have open dialogue with those gentlemen across the street, and we will get this done. We've had great working relationship with CCEA, we've had really good working relationships in these committees, and Blueprint's here, and it is the law, so, but I do understand your concerns, I really do. Would anybody else, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, again, Ms. Sevigny, I hear you. I too am a numbers person, managing the businesses and the budgets that I have. I think the public really needs to understand the serious position that we are in. The Commissioners are already budgeted to give us $7 million more than they did last year, and we're coming to them asking for another $11 million on top of that. This is hard, and if we didn't get reprieved from certain Blueprint things, such as the 60-40 split, we're not forced to hire more teachers to cover that 60-40 split, we would be in an even harder predicament. Make no mistake, this is serious, and I have strong reservations, like you, Ms. Sevigny, in supporting a budget like this, but we have no choice from my perspective. However, I'm an expectations-management kind of guy. I have been my entire life, and it's very important that the stakeholders within our school system, parents, taxpayers, if we can't get all of the funding, we have to make some really serious choices. And I said earlier in my opening remarks, 60 teachers is about $5 million. I don't want to cut teachers, I don't want to renegotiate contracts, but remember, this is just the beginning. 60-40 split, having to hire another 120-something teachers, pension costs, it's just the beginning, and we cannot tax our way out of this, we just can't. Even if you doubled property taxes in Carroll County, I don't know where the Commissioners are going to find the money for this. So the General Assembly, stakeholders, folks across the entire state, need to come to grips with this and get back to common sense, because this is not sustainable, it just is not. So with reservation, you know, the budget is what it is, and we just need to be prepared to act, but above all, just manage expectations and get flexibility from everybody concerned.
Thank you for your opinion, and Donna, I really thank yours too. Dr. Dorsey, do you have anything to say?
I appreciate hearing the concerns that have been expressed, but I guess I feel like now is the time that we have to act on this. We do have some momentum in place, and again, I would just like to build on that and certainly support the budget as it's being presented here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pataglia?
I mean, many people have heard me say, you know, we can't afford to constantly get behind. You have other counties who are jumping ahead of the game, and my fear is those other counties, they'll be regretting it later. We are, we're doing it at, to me, a good pace, we're doing what we need to do, you know, and, you know, we're the biggest employer of this county, and our, you know, our teachers do everything that they need to do for our students, or, you know, this is law, and I'm not one to play chicken with the law, so I, I'm a rule follower, so.
Thank you for your opinion. First of all, I need to thank everyone that has really worked hard on this budget, because it has been just time-consuming on everybody's part here in this room. But strategically, this is the right decision to pass this FY25 budget, and I'm going to repeat exactly what I said at the budget hearing. I appreciate the focus from Dr. McCabe, where salaries are very important and comply with the Blueprint mandates along with that career ladder. It's the new law, and our priority will now have to be to hire and retain the best qualified teachers to continue our academic endeavors, and we still need to be a leader in the state. We will need to work hand-in-hand with our Commissioners to get this accomplishment done, and we all need to hand each Commissioner a FY25 notebook budget that we did last year. Any other comments? I will call for...
Ms. Sparsha, just one last comment. Like, I did say that I came in here tonight thinking that I would not vote for this budget for the reasons that I outlined. I will say that based on the comments that I heard here tonight, like, I think I can reluctantly vote to support this budget. I just want to say that if or when it comes to having to reconcile based on what the Commissioners determine, I am very unwilling to take actions that would be detrimental to student services or student performance, meaning, you know, like, larger class sizes and things like that. So I just want to very specifically state that.
Donna, we've been together for over eight years, thinking when we started the campaign, I do respect your opinion, and I always have respected your opinion. I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously, and I thank all my board members. And now, we will move on to, I have a script here, so I don't mess this up. I need a motion to approve the FY25 food service budget as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Dr. Dorsey. Comments, questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to approve the FY25 debt service fund budget as presented. So moved by Ms. Pataglia, seconded by Mr. Whistler. Thank you. Comments or questions? I call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously, and I thank you all for these votes. And now, we will move on to the, I need a motion for the approval of personnel action items?
So moved.
By Dr. Dorsey, seconded by, by Ms. Pataglia. Dr. McCabe?
For the monthly personnel action items, there are two new hires, two leaves of absence, and two promotions.
Comments or questions? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. And now I will move on to, on Monday, February 26th, and I've already made a comment about this, at 6:00 PM, the Superintendent will be holding a town hall meeting on Blueprint at South Carroll High School in the Cafeteria, 1300 West Old Liberty Road. At 5:00 PM, Wednesday, March 13th, board meeting with public participation in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. At 5:00 PM, on Monday, March 18th, we will have a work session on student behavior in the boardroom at 125 North Court Street. And at 6:00 PM, on Monday, March 25th, 2024, Superintendent Town Hall Meeting on the Maryland Blueprint at the Carroll County Career and Tech Center in the Cafeteria, 1229 Washington Road Westminster. At this time, I need a motion for adjournment. So moved by Dr. Dorsey, and seconded by Ms. Pataglia. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Have a great evening and enjoy what's left of Valentine's Day.